The flyers advertising what I'm...
Yeah. It's like money is maybe...
It's only about this big.
I want a check screen.
Yeah. Where the other one's...
And also color.
Yeah, the other one's...
Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 15th, 2011. It's 9:00 a.m. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we have the roll call, I would just like to explain our somewhat unusual agenda sequence for this morning. The first portion of our meeting essentially was referred to as a sine de a meeting. That's from the Latin meaning "without a day," meaning this is the end of the current sitting council. So there'll be a couple items on the agenda that are carryover, housekeeping items. At the end of that portion, we will adjourn the meeting, or I'm sorry, recess the meeting, swear in the newly elected council members, reconvene seating the new council members, and then we'll proceed with our regular order of business. The public comment portion of the meeting will be at the end of that second portion. So may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember DeStefano.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Morman is excused.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the November 1st council meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Set.
Moved in second, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, presentation on the 2011 intercoastal waterway cleanup event. Mr. Landon.
Mayor Denise is going to handle this. We had another great event this year, and she just wanted to highlight some of the activities and some of the individuals who helped make it happen.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Can everybody hear me just fine? Good. As Mr. Landon said, I want to highlight some of our results from our fourth annual intercoastal waterway cleanup event. We're very excited to share this. Our event objectives, as they are every year, is to ensure that our volunteers are safe and that it's a very convenient event for them. So what I have here showing as part of the slide is our core cleanup areas. We focus on the waterways, the intercoastal, and our natural areas within the city of Palm Coast. In addition, last year, we added an expanded part of the event and incorporated an event orientation. We found that we were achieving a lot of group participations, and if we reached out to the group leaders directly, that saved a lot of the mobilization and outreach on the day of the event. So this year, we did that again, and half of our groups actually participated in that. And that happens a week before the actual event, so it gives time for the coordinators to get with their groups, help them understand what they shouldn't and should do as part of the event. And this year, we actually expanded again and incorporated a geocache treasure hunt perspective, which was a pretty interesting aspect to what the cleaners had to do when they were out in the environment. We actually hid seven and got four of them back, so I would say that was a successful aspect to the cleanup. And as always, we want to increase our numbers, increase the amount of garbage we remove from the waterways. So we started the event in 2008, and in our original event, we had 98 volunteers. Since then, we doubled every year, our volunteer participation. This year, we were a little down. We had 468 volunteers. But really, if I had to guess on why that was, that we had a drop in volunteers, we had a little bit of threatening weather, but Mr. Landon pulled it out of his hat and made it a very beautiful day after, at the end of, towards the end of the event. But also, this year, we followed the international coastal cleanup. We tried to stagger the timing of the event so we don't interfere in that cleanup, which usually happens on the beach. So maybe we had a lot of participation in that event, which decreased our participation this year. And also, you can see that the garbage retrieved from the environment went down a little bit, but the recycling materials went up. And I think that really has contributed to the event orientation, where we explained to them, you get a black bag for the regular garbage, you get a clear bag for the recyclable materials that you come across. So our recycling materials did go up, and overall, in a summary of the actual event, this was our biggest year for removing materials. And I think we really contribute that to our boaters. This is our first year that we really had a strong boating community in effect during the event. So I think overall, very successful event. Over the course of the four years, 8,500 pounds of materials removed from our waterways. Of course, our volunteers are the core of why this was successful, but also, we want to recognize our sponsors. Foremost, four years in a row since our initial event, Florida Inland Navigation District has given us $5,000 through a grant program. And that's contributed to the reusable shopping bags that City Council sees in front of them, reusable water bottles, instead of just giving them bottles of water that adds to the plastic waste and the environment, actually giving them a recyclable or reusable bottle that they don't have to worry about recycling. Also, all the materials to clean up with, garbage bags, even safety equipment. So also, we have the Flagler County Sports Fishing Club. Our first year of their sponsorship, they gave us $200, and also rod and reels. And the $200 was used for prizes that supports the theme of respecting the environment and also getting out there and fishing and enjoying boating. Winn-Dixie provided hot dogs, buns, concessions. Waste Pro, a contributing sponsor for each of the four years, provided us dumpsters at no cost. Hawaiian Tropic provided us skincare products, so people were out there in the sun, made sure that they had the protective lotions to keep them from getting a sunburn. Our partners, Indian Trail Service Learning Center, a group of students that were up at dawn with me on the day of the event, contributing to giving out t-shirts and things like that. Flagler County Volunteers, great organization. Seven volunteers helped us pack 500 bags, early packing, and that was a very worthwhile contribution on their part. And Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, their officers, they had two conservation officers that actually came to the event and actually became our honorable judges for the most unique find, because I didn't want to make that decision. And here's just some images of our volunteers, some of the snapshots of the day of the event, but really to give it full perspective of how impressive our volunteers did and what a community effort, it all came together. We actually have a video to share, and if it pleases council, we'd like to share that with you and the public.
Please.
Holy cow! What is this? Like three, four bottles, styrofoils, rock cans? Oh, it's all right here. One. Two. Three. Oh, it's like a jackpot. It's like a bowl or something. Same with steel, you can tell because it's not rusted.
Must not be black there.
Yeah. Hey! Oh, it's a tin can, it's really busted. Okay, next thing, the more recycling, so...
Okay.
So what does this mean to you guys, the idea of you doing that?
Just to clear out, to avoid harm.
We've gone where no one has ever gone.
Probably last year, too.
Oh, like the fishing line. Back a little bit, ah. There's a thing right down here. Shoo!
With great enthusiasm and desire to clean up the environment, this year's 468 volunteers and over 15 different community groups fanned out across Palm Coast trails and waterways, contributing an all-out effort to collect as much trash as possible while playfully competing for a chance to win a prize for the event's most unique find. It all started bright and early at Holland Park.
We gotta find a lot of litter.
Very good. What do you hope to find out there?
Uh, some litter and plates, spark lamps.
So you're going to Lehigh today?
Yes, with the troop, Girl Scout troop base six four. Yeah, exactly.
Is this your first year?
Uh-huh, yeah, it sure is.
What do you hope to accomplish, you, the group, the event, everything?
Well, our Girl Scouts are working on their bronze medal this year, so they want to just try to make the world a better place is their total goal. So we thought this was a great, great way to start that bronze medal.
We established targeted areas to clean up, specifically the water resources, and we've actually expanded out with cooperation of Flagler County to actually have volunteers in their facilities. So for the city, we have waterfront park, we have St. James Walkway, we have linear park, you know, all those amenities that are water-related, and then also, we have some Girl Scouts down at Lehigh Trail, we have Boy Scout at Graham Swamp Reserve. So really, anywhere in the city, you'll probably find a volunteer today.
Why don't come out here today?
What are we doing?
Cleaning up, cleaning up.
On fire.
The park community looks better for everybody, right?
Yeah.
And why Lehigh Trail? Why don't pick this, this is quite a long one to pass, lots of stuff.
I know, there's a lot of walkers going this trail, a lot of bikers, and we want to make sure it looks nice and it's safe for them, there's no garbage around. Yeah.
And what does it mean to you to clean up right along the waterways and along the pathways here in Palm Coast?
Good.
It's a happy life, it's a space for helping guard here.
And we know what happens in our water.
It's a lucky soup bowl. Right?
You see what I said, walking right there?
Hi, it is quite long though.
There's a Pepsi can over there, and then the bar wine bottle over there.
What brings you out today? What's the most meaningful aspect of this event in your mind?
Uh, just keeping Palm Coast clean. We live here, you know, we just want it to look nice and that's about it, I guess.
For those of us who know the movie. Here, it's a fire lance. Well, I haven't spotted any poison ivy yet.
Oh, it's a baby. Oh, it all comes down to environmental and community investment. Every year, we're just so amazed about how much people are committed to the environment. And it's amazing how many numbers have come out and participate and get their hands dirty on a Saturday where I'm sure they might have better things to do. And so, you know, just coming together and making a change for the better.
Following cleanup, all were invited back to Holland Park to enjoy in-time snacks and beverages, and for a special award ceremony recognizing those who found the most unique find.
I like the horse.
New to the event this year was geocaching. The city placed a number of small geocache boxes containing distinct treasures along the trails. And while many pursued the city's geocaches, the Saba family discovered an unrelated geocache deep in the woods, placed there in 2009, making this find, in the eyes of judges from Florida Fish and Wildlife, the most unique find of the day.
We have this box of letters, we won the most unique find at the annual intercoastal waterway cleanup, and we are keeping this going, signed, all of us, all, all five of us.
This year's 2011 waterway cleanup collected a total of 1,708 pounds of generic trash and 1,064 pounds of recyclable material, for a whopping total of 2,772 pounds. 909 pounds of that was contributed by the Marine Troller Owners Association, the most collected from any group.
Cocktail table suitable for a nautical atmosphere in your living room, as long as you have clothespins for your nose, pump up site, own fence, gate. Lots of construction timber from the box, people either discarded or dropped overboard. This was all in the canals and C-section, the three main canals off of ICW.
The city gives big thanks to all our waterway cleanup volunteers. We also appreciate the vision, support, and partnership from FIND, the Florida Inland Navigation District. And we give further thanks to our local sponsors and partners, who ensure this event remains one of the area's premier environmental programs.
Denise, thank you very much for coordinating this wonderful event, and thanks to all the volunteers who participated. And wouldn't it be nice if someday the rest of us wouldn't create all of that rubbish by not discarding it?
Thank you.
I look forward to the day when they go out and they find nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also would like to recognize two of the groups. We had a very large turnout, again, of groups for this participation, but if I could, could I have you join me at the podium, Mr. Mayor?
My pleasure.
Thank you. As you can see on the PowerPoint presentation, we had a tremendous amount of effort done for this waterway cleanup. And I do have some volunteers here today, specifically the Marine Troller Owners Association. Would you please join me at the podium to be recognized for your extraordinary efforts for this event?
Who would give this to?
Him.
Would you like to say a few words?
Well, yes, we enjoyed making it work.
Give him my back. Now you can see the t-shirt, see? We enjoy the event. This year, we had 24 volunteers in our group manning 10 boats. What you see all came out of the C-section canal, primarily what's referred to as sailboat country. It's a little upsetting to see how much debris there is there. The event was coordinated energetically and pleasantly and efficiently by Denise Bevan. We really enjoyed working with her. She's an asset to the community and to the government. Last year, a smaller group of us collected almost the same amount of trash, but we had a little coordination problem and got to Holland Park after the events had concluded. So our 800 or 900 pounds last year was not included in the totals. It's a good event, and we're glad to see the youngsters involved. I was very pleased when we went to the organizational meeting to see all the young people there. And I think that's a plus for the community. Thank you. Thank you very much, and we hope to be back this year.
And we have one more award to administer today for the most unique find. This is a group, Saba, that has worked with us many times in past events, and I would like to welcome them also to the podium, please.
Most unique find. Congratulations, yes! Congratulations. Thank you. Are you the spokesperson for the group?
I guess so.
Do you want to say?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Nets, I'm sorry, could we go ahead and say something to you all? We're really appreciative, Anila, Anjali, Sophia, and Brianna, thanks to Celia Whitefield, who has been a pioneering mom, has been bringing the kids out for this event every year since it began. Actually, we were our first group of kids that participated in it, and we've just enjoyed it tremendously. They have become great personal, and I think they are great representatives to the school community as well for recycling and reusing, and we're excited for them and their future too. So thank you so much for allowing them to be a part of this process.
Thank you. Kind of makes you proud to be a Palm Coaster. Agenda item number three, presentation for structural beautification award to Mobile One Sunshine Express Store Number 308.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We'll continue the feel-good portion of our meeting today with another award that exemplifies why Palm Coast is such a great place to live, work, and play. I'm the landscape architect for the city, as well as a city liaison to the Beautification and Environmental Advisory Board, which created this award program to kind of help the residents and the businesses, inspire them to make their homes and businesses look more attractive and just make us look like a nice, clean community. We have here today the chairperson of the BEAB, Selena Chalkley, I'd like to bring her up right now, and she'll explain a little bit about why we selected Mobile One Sunshine Express for this first structural beautification award. Selena?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I want to recap real quick. We've previously awarded two Go Green Awards to Hilton Garden Inn and Home Care Pharmacy, commercial beautification award to Palm Harbor Shopping Village, and two residential beautification awards. So this is our first structural beautification award for a redeveloped commercial property. I would like to thank Wendy Barlow with Southeast Petro for coming to accept the award. She's representing the Mobile One Sunshine Express Store at 220 Palm Coast Parkway, which was formerly the Exxon, which was an abandoned building for a little while. So they did a redevelopment as opposed to a new development, which is just wonderful. It created a more favorable business environment, and was created at the same time it beautified our community. I'd like to go over a couple of the things that they did on their property. The developer was encouraged to keep the native kokina stone as a prominent feature in the architecture of the building and canopy, which they did. Bahamas shutters were also incorporated over some fox windows to break up a blank wall. It blends very nicely with the Palm Harbor Shopping Center, which is one of our original landmark buildings, a great facility. Native plants were used, which were sable palms, coonti fern, live oak. Also, a lot of the existing landscape material was kept, yelp on hollies. Also, drought-tolerant species such as lantana, juniper, potocarpus, and European fan palm were used. This shopping center is passed by many tourists and visitors alike as they access I-95, and it helps to convey the appeal and coastal look of Palm Coast. This is what Palm Coast should look like, in my opinion. Our attention to the importance of landscape beautification and attractive architecture, this just goes to show what Palm Coast can and will look like. And we want to thank Wendy for letting us nominate her project, which I thought was a shoo-in from the beginning. And thank you again, Wendy, for your time. So here is your award, and then you'll get to keep this sign on your property, so everyone who passes by can see. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, on behalf of the Shaws and Southeast Petro. They weren't able to be here, but thank you for nominating us. We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, resolution approving fiscal year 2011 budget amendment for the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. Mr. Landon?
Mr. Mayor? Mayor, City Council.
Do we have something?
One last proclamation, yes.
Okay, sorry. We have one addition to our proclamation. Mr. Meeker, would you be so kind? This is recognizing the Portuguese-American cultural society.
Whereas Armando Enriquez, Ramiro Aguilar, Joe Portal, Joe Jose Armida, Manuel Martens, and Tony Amaral, six Palm Coast residents who were dedicated to the preservation of the Portuguese customs and culture in their hometown, formed the first Portuguese-American cultural center in 1987. And whereas the Portuguese-American community in Palm Coast continued to prosper and grow over the years, generating construction of a beautiful new cultural center in 2003 that has become the setting for its 600 members to together enjoy special events, holiday folklore programs, ethnic banquets and ceremonies. And whereas Palm Coast Portuguese community brings a vivid collage of ethnic traditions to our city, including colorful music, cuisine, and native language that embraces an atmosphere of understanding and goodwill within our neighborhoods. And whereas the members of Palm Coast Portuguese-American Cultural Center preserve their proud cultural traditions year after year, building a foundation of life for their future generations. And whereas celebrating the 24th anniversary of the Portuguese-American Cultural Center significantly aligns with the decades-long observances that cultural diversity is our strength in Palm Coast. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council commemorate the Portuguese-American Cultural Center's 24th anniversary celebration, and thank the membership for its meaningful contributions that they have made to enhance the lives of all Palm Coast citizens adopted this day, the 12th day of November 2011, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor. Mr. President, congratulations. Would you like to say something?
Good morning, and I'm here to represent the club because I'm the actual president, and I receive this with honor and a pleasure. Portuguese community here is growing, and very happy to live in Palm Coast, a city that received us, and I wish that we have one of us sitting there very soon. Thank you.
There are also really big soccer picks there for you now. Johnny one-note. Okay, agenda item number four, resolution, budget amendment for Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. Mr. Landon, it's finally your turn.
Yes, this is actually just a housekeeping item. During this past year, we closed out the widening of Old Kings Road South, that area between the canal there at Town Center Boulevard and State Road 100. This was actually a special assessment district where the property owners agreed to tax themselves to pay for these improvements. This item actually is a correction to last year's budget, where when we presented the final budget to you, we kept the estimate in the numbers, and the actual final figure was calculated back in May and was just an oversight where it wasn't updated. So this is cleaning that up and updating it to reflect the actual interest payment. There's no tax dollars involved here whatsoever. It doesn't impact next year's budget, it's just strictly a cleanup item, where the payments are made from those property owners, in this case, as interest payments. That's kind of the story. So we're asking to... So, we're asking to clean this up, so when the auditors come here in a couple of weeks, it's consistent with the actual financial records.
Counsel questions? Seeing none, open the meeting to the public, aim for the public, which should be heard on agenda item number four. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close public portion of the meeting and go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to adopt the...
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number five, resolution approving the final 2011 general election results. Mr. Landon?
Mayor, City Council, Virginia is going to handle this item.
Good morning, Council. We did the official municipal general election results on November 10th, held at the Supervisor of Elections Office. First seat won, the City of Palm Coast, the whole number of votes cast was 5,816, of which number William E. McGuire received 2,874 votes. Holsey Mormon received 2,819 votes. For seat three, City of Palm Coast, the whole number of votes cast was 5,816, of which number Jason Di Lorenzo received 2,766 votes, and Dennis Cross received 2,730 votes. We, the canvassing board, certified pursuant to Section 102.151 of the Florida statutes. The canvassing board has reconciled the numbers of persons who voted with the number of ballots counted, and that the certification included all the votes cast in the election.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll motion to approve the results. Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. At this time, we'd like to recess the meeting, pause for a few minutes, and then we will have a swearing-in of the newly-elected council members. We are in recess. All right, Mary. You're finally free.
Stay in touch.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Nets...
I, John Nets...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution and government of the United States...
...and of the state of Florida...
And of the state of Florida.
...that I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
...under the Constitution of the state...
Under the Constitution of the state.
...and that I will well and faithfully perform...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
...the duties of mayor of the City of Palm Coast...
Duties of mayor of the City of Palm Coast...
...of which I am now about to enter...
Which I am now about to enter.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations. William McGuire, please meet me at the podium. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bill McGuire...
I, Bill McGuire...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
...and of the state of Florida...
And of the state of Florida.
...that I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
...under the Constitution of the state...
Under the Constitution of the state.
...and that I will well and faithfully perform...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
...the duties of council member...
The duties of council member.
...of the City of Palm Coast...
Of the City of Palm Coast.
...of which I am now about to enter...
Of which I am now about to enter.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jason Di Lorenzo?
Bill?
Mr. Lewis?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jason Di Lorenzo...
I, Jason Di Lorenzo.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution and government of the United States.
...and of the state of Florida...
And of the state of Florida.
...that I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
...under the Constitution of the state...
Under the Constitution of the state.
...and that I will well and faithfully perform...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
...the duties of council member of the City of Palm Coast...
The duties of council member of the City of Palm Coast.
...on which I am now about to enter...
On which I am now about to enter.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nets?
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Here.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. Before we continue with our agenda, I'd like to offer each of the newly-elected council members an opportunity to say a few words if you'd care to. Mr. Di Lorenzo, we'll start with you. My goodness, he can...
You've been watching reruns? Thank you very much. From the moment my wife Rebecca and I made the decision to run for Palm Coast City Council, we learned that the journey to the destination has grown us as a family in unexpected and exciting ways. We wanted to thank all of our event volunteers, signed waivers, poll workers, hosts, hostesses of meet-and-greets, donors, all who passed out literature, placed signs on their properties, and of course, those who voted for us. During the journey, we learned many things about being a candidate for office and the process. Because we're renewed to the process, we made a few mistakes, and there were some disappointments along the way, but overall, it was a very positive experience. Rec and I learned so much about you, about your families, your concerns. We learned that it is important to run a grassroots campaign. In our grassroots effort, we were touched by your stories and humbled by your willingness to engage on our behalf. From the beginning, we vowed to run a clean, upstanding campaign with a focus on the issues, and I'm proud to say we never wavered. I pledge to you that in the next five years, I will be your advocate. I will be a good steward of your tax dollars, work to bring new jobs to our community, while assisting our existing businesses to expand and make every effort for you, your children, and your grandchildren to enjoy living in one of the best cities of our size in the country. I pledge to hold regular town hall meetings, be available to you by phone, and to meet with you personally, and again, I thank you.
Mr. McGuire, your turn.
What he said. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, citizens of Palm Coast, for the opportunity to serve this wonderful city that we live in. Thank you to all those who worked very hard on my campaign. Thank you to Mr. Mormon for conducting himself like a gentleman and fighting hard. Somebody has to win, somebody has to lose. Somebody has to win, somebody has to lose, but certainly, he should be recognized for his contribution. As Mr. DiLorenzo said, I pledge that I'll do my very best to do what I can for the citizens of this community. I made pledges during my campaign. I have those rack cards available. They're still free, and I'm going to do my very best to fulfill those. So again, thank you very much. Thank you for my wife for suffering through the agony of the campaign, and we look forward to moving forward and helping to make a contribution to the city of Palm Coast. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, since we gave them the floor, Mr. Lewis, do you have any comments?
Yes, I want to congratulate the newly elected council members, and I'd like to welcome them to the team. And this is the team, and this team works very closely with the city manager to make Palm Coast what it is. To shorten the learning curve for these two members, I would strongly recommend that they talk to Marsha to enroll themselves in our five-week city academy program, which will tell them all about our various departments and what makes the city tick. And it's a five-week program, five Mondays, and it's a great deal. It'll shorten the learning curve. So I strongly recommend that they contact Marsha and enroll in that.
Thank you. Mr. Meeker?
Well, nothing really to add, other than, gentlemen, you're going to find that this is a new and exciting time in your life. You have the ability to sit in on the continued creation of one of the neatest cities I know of in the 18 counties that I cover, and I think you're going to really enjoy the experience. So welcome aboard.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven is selection of the vice mayor for 2011-2012. It's interesting, we have four city council members, and we have four-year terms, and the tradition has been that each council member serves as vice mayor during each of their terms. And it's also been a tradition that the outgoing vice mayor nominate his or her successor. So, Mr. Meeker?
Well, Mr. Mayor, as you look at the list of people who have been vice mayor before, there's some very distinguished names on here. And therefore, following in that same tradition, it's time for Mr. Lewis to step up to the plate, and therefore, I nominate Bill Lewis as the next vice mayor for the city of Palm Coast.
I second the nomination.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Lewis.
I'd pass you a gavel if I had one, but the mayor would never give it to me.
Okay. Agenda item number eight. There are a few council appointments that we make each year. We point a representative to the Flagler County Tourist Development Council, to the Flagler League of Cities, to the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice, Circuit Seven, to the Palm Coast and Flagler County Chamber of Commerce. We have had an appointment to the Water Management District, but that's really in observer positions. It's not a position of any voting power. And an appointment to the Stewart Marchman Center, again, the representation of the city. Are there any nominations for the Flagler County Tourist Development Council?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I can't nominate myself, but-
Sure you can.
But I'd like to nominate myself, only because, last year on this one, if you remember, I'd expressed the interest in the Tourist Development Council, that Councilwoman Distefano had also expressed a desire to stay on for one more year, to finish off her term, therefore, I stepped down in order to allow her to accomplish that task. And so, for that reason, I'd like to take a whack at it this year.
Are there anyone else interested in that position?
I would like to throw my hat to the ring also. I'm also interested in the Tourist Development Council, always have been, and I'd like to do my job there. So I nominate myself.
Okay, we have two nominations for the Tourist Development Council. I don't think we need a second, we have two. I would suggest that this is not an appointment in perpetuity. This could be a rotating position also, and I think it would be worthwhile if we did that after a period of time to give everyone an opportunity to understand how the TDC works. All in favor of Mr. Meeker? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Let's do a roll call vote on that, please, since I can't hear. Roll call vote, please. Those in favor of Frank Meeker to the TDC.
Councilmember Meeker?
I have to vote on myself?
You're absolutely allowed to. I'm sure the President of the United States voted for himself.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
I'm going to vote myself, and also, I'm going to say that since Mr. Meeker serves on the Chamber of Commerce, I assume that he will relinquish that.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm going to withdraw and let Mr. Meeker move in on the Tourist Development Council.
Okay. If that is the case, we have one nomination, and all in favor of appointing Frank Meeker to the TDC? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries out objection. Flagler League of Cities, that is a position that is normally accorded to the mayor. Half the time, we talk about ourselves as the league of mayors, the other half the time, we talk about ourselves as the league of cities. So I would like to submit my name to continue as the representative to the Flagler League of Cities.
I'll second that motion.
Any other motions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries out objection. Flagler County and Palm Coast Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Meeker, you held that position. You have relinquished it.
You skipped one.
I know, I'm just doing them in that order, so I don't forget that one. Mr. Lewis has indicated an interest in being the representative to the Chamber of Commerce. Anyone else wish to put their name forth?
I wish to put my name forth, your honor.
Okay, so we have two nominations, Mr. Lewis and Mr. McGuire. Are there any others? All in favor of Mr. Lewis? Let's do a roll call vote in favor of Mr. Lewis first.
Councilmember Meeker?
Mr. Lewis, yes, you've been here the longest, I think it's your turn.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Mayor Nets?
Yes. Okay.
Mayor, the appointment is past four to one.
All right, fine, thank you very much. Florida Department of Juvenile Justice, Circuit Seven, that is a new appointment. We don't have any history there. We received a letter from the Circuit Court asking that we be representative. Is there any specifics that you want to share? Virginia, do you have a copy of that letter with you?
We received a letter from Sharon Zaro, the president and chair of the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice, Circuit Seven Juvenile Justice Council. She was requesting someone to be on the board to support our municipalities, and the C7 DJJ Board meets quarterly, the second Friday in August, November, February, and May, in the Government Services Building at 2:00 PM. And the Flagler County DJJ Council meets the third Wednesday of every month at 9:00 AM in the Government Services Building as well. They are looking for municipality representation on this board.
Well, we have two remaining council members who have not yet taken any assignment. Would anybody particularly like the Juvenile Justice Council?
Your honor, a question, please.
Certainly.
Can you describe what the duties of this appointment would entail?
Virginia, do you have anything that addresses that?
Yes, the mission of the DJJ Circuit Seven Board and county councils is to provide a forum for community partners to effectively identify causes of juvenile delinquency, conduct an honest and ongoing assessment of juvenile services, provide solid, long-lasting solutions to problems, and support successful program which improves the lives of the youth and families by increasing public safety.
Anyone wish to serve?
I'll nominate myself for that.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor of Mr. DiLorenzo serving in juvenile justice? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Congratulations. St. John's Water Management District and/or Stewart Marchman Center, Mr. McGuire, there's one left, and you're left, so I'm going to ask if you would serve in that capacity?
Thank you, your honor. I would consider it a wet and wild honor.
There is one other issue I'd like to get some guidance on from Mr. DiLorenzo. There is a subcommittee of the Chamber of Commerce that is the Business Issues Committee. I have been attending that, was never on a council appointment, I was invited by the chamber to participate and have been. Mr. DiLorenzo has also been attending more or less frequently with his position as chairman of a committee in the chamber. There are a couple of options open to us, to you and me, Mr. DiLorenzo. We could both continue to attend. If we did that, the city would have to notice those meetings, the Chamber of Commerce would have to notice those meetings, and the chamber would have to understand that those meetings would be open to the public. Or you can assume representation of the city if you're going to continue serving in your capacity with the chamber. Leave that decision entirely up to you. And you may want to confer with the chamber. If we both attend, then they must be notice meetings, and they must be open to the public. So why don't we hold that one in abeyance until you-
So it doesn't have to be wrapped up today, then?
No, it doesn't, because I think the meeting for this month was canceled anyways. Okay. Takes care of that. Okay. We're now ready for the public portion of the meeting. Anyone for the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda, please approach the podium, give us your name. Please limit your contribution to three minutes.
Bill will do that one, too. Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. This is an article from the paper, and I'd like to read just a portion of it. It says, "Putnam State Bank Owns The Land Between Lee and Leiter Drives Where The 50-Unit Multifamily Complex Will Be Built." The only branch Putnam State has in Flagler County is in Bonnell, and they want one in Palm Coast. Now, the point here is, we own a piece of property that we paid $1.2 million for. The bank owns a piece of property on Lee area that's going to sell for $585,000, or $400 and something. The point here is, Mr. Landlin says, "Sell the property to a builder, or whatever, and then have him sell the property to the bank." One question, why do we have to have a middleman to sell a piece of property? And why are we in the business of letting somebody else make whatever profit could be made from selling a piece of property? That is one that I would like to know why we're involved in buying a piece of property from one, and selling a piece of property to another, and acting as a middleman. Second, I would like to say this, I am absolutely disgusted with the people of Palm Coast. When you can have an election with only 5,000 people voting, it is absolutely disgusting.
Thank you. We've got an answer to your question. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. This is just a comment. For 11 years, I've come to city council meetings, to workshops, to observe, and to give a sense of direction. I will continue, and I'll be watching you all. And at the same time, I wish to congratulate you both, but remember this, our eyes are on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. I come with a different type of a problem, but I don't know for sure that you can handle all of it, but I'm going to ask that some consideration, something be done. We have a neighbor situation that's a number of questionable activities going on at 4B Faraday Lane. We've written letters to the owner, we've written letters to talk to the real estate agent, we've talked to the police about it. There's a situation going on here, which for the last six months, a pit bull has been coming, going, coming and going. We've had a member of the community bitten by the dog. The dog was taken out of the county, brought back, and eventually was allowed to return to the neighborhood. The dog, in short order, attacked the next-door neighbor's dog, with two young boys taking care of the dog, and they watched their dog being mauled to death. Finally, the dog was taken into custody, and we were told, instead of being euthanized, it's going to be returned to its owner. In that same house, coming and going at all hours, different hours of the day, night, there are people coming and people going. I can't say what actually is going on inside of the house, but when you have that many people coming, staying 15, 20 minutes, and then leaving, different cars, different times of day, different times of evening, it usually indicates that you're not having exactly car games going on, or friendly visits. In the last week or two, the sheriff's deputies have been at this place a couple of times. One of the times, they were looking for a person who's on a warrant. While they were going in the front door with the dog to search the house, the perpetrator escaped out the back door. This kind of situation's been going on in this neighborhood for the longest. I have here a neighbor who lives behind them, that can verify that you have a situation of a young girl who prostitutes herself in the backyard on occasion, and in the street on occasion. And all of this is going on in this house. There's a young man who shows up every now and then, and he wears his gang colors and his gang flag. The reason I know what these things look like is because I come from a neighborhood in which that was typical, and I know that I don't want it in my neighborhood. We're asking this morning that something be done to solve this problem. We've gone to the police, nothing's happened. We're asking that maybe the city attorney could step into the situation and send a letter to-
Fifteen seconds, please.
And send a letter to the real estate agent, asking that the lease dispenser, and a letter to the owner, that this type of situation is going on and disturbing the entire situation. Thank you for your answer.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning, council. Good morning, council, and neighbors and friends who came here in support of this same situation.
Give us your name, please.
Carolyn McLaughlin. I live at 31 Faraday Lane. I was the first victim of a pit bull attack which originated from this house, which is addressed 4B Faraday Lane. This house is an eyesore and a threat to our community. The occupants have no apparent means of income, but appear to live quite well. The house is costing the taxpayer a fortune. Why? F-cat honks and waits, no one comes out, frequently official-looking vehicles come and go. What is this costing our taxpayers to support this questionable residence? There have been two pit bull attacks on Faraday in less than six months. Both times, the pit bull in question was in charge of, in the charge of Patrick Moran. Please note, Saint Patrick- Please note: same Patrick, different dogs. Dan Colletti says he is Patrick's caretaker, according to some reports. If Dan is Patrick's caretaker, as stated in the reports, he is failing miserably. It appears they reside at 4B Faraday Lane. November 12th, as Mr. Henderson stated, a young boy, two young boys, had to witness their pet being chewed up by a pit bull that was in the care of Patrick Moran. I sustained injuries, as did my dog. In both cases, no efforts were made by Patrick to restrain the pit bull. No efforts have been made by Patrick or Dan Colletti to apologize. No effort has been made to assist with expenses incurred, especially with euthanization. This is not responsible animal ownership. According to reports, neither Patrick nor Dan have been charged. My 11-year-old neighbor and his mother are prisoners in their own home. They just happen to live next door to this contemptible house. We neighbors feel unsafe. Pristine Palm Coast has the beginnings of a ghetto. We, the taxpayers, are asking you, the city officials, as well as the law enforcement, to please step up, admit there is and has been a problem with tenants and the homeowner of 4B Faraday Lane. Please, we want a safe street and neighborhood for our elderly, our families, our pets, and future generations. August 18th, some of us finally had a meeting with city officials informing of the undesirable activities of 4B Faraday Lane. We have informed code enforcement on many occasions of questionable activities, as well as the fines of syringes in the grass. We also voiced our fears of future attacks from a steady parade of pit bulls through this house, which seems to be given to Patrick to parade up and down the street. Pat will curse profusely at us. He appears to be very unstable and not a trusted individual. We saw no results from this informal meeting with the city officials. There was simply more comings and goings of various vehicles and stranger appearing people. Patrick claims not to live at 4B Faraday Lane on the police reports, but he always seems to be there and on the street with pit bulls he is unable to control.
Fifteen seconds, please.
The police report he lives at 20 Blakefield Lane. Dan claims to be a diabetic, a responsible diabetic would not dispose of used paraphernalia in the grass in the neighbor's yard. We want responsible animal ownership, cleanup of this house, and as Mr. Henderson mentioned, terminate the lease.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Judge Demestall. I am the neighbor, and I'm the father of the little boy, five-years-old boy, who is the witness when that man from 4 Faraday Lane came and on the leash with the dog and killed the little dog. It's a shame, when we got the meeting before, and we was asking to do something, nobody ever did anything. How any of you will feel when you son, so little, watching the blood shooting everywhere from their dog? Tell me, how you can respond? He was on the city meeting with the police, with the code enforcement, with you, sir, and nobody ever did anything. And that's what we were saying. You guys are going to do something when somebody's going to get killed? You know how close it was for that dog to grab that boy? So I'm just asking you guys to do something real, not just listen, just do it. It is that the little trouble is impossible to take care of, but police, how you guys are going to take care of the big problem? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Sarah Castillo, and I live in Faraday Lane, and the owner of the dog that I was killing from my neighbor's dog. I'm still afraid about my neighbor's next door because I cannot go outside. My son is afraid about those people that live next to me. And also, he cannot walk outside because he say, "Mommy, I'm afraid." Also, when those people stay outside, we cannot go to walk outside because there is smoke. I don't know what kind of smoke they smoke, or it's, I don't know. I cannot walk, I cannot stay outside. My son cannot ride his bike, my son cannot ride his skateboard. Now, his dog, he don't have dog now. Also, he has bad dream at night, he cannot sleep because our dog was like my son and like his little brother. And now, he say, "Mom, I'm afraid because they coming again with that dog there. What happen if I get another dog?" So please, do something because, you know, I'm a single mom, and I don't know what kind of reaction those people is going to do. Because those people, if I say something to the police, I'm afraid to say something because I don't know what they're going to do. I live in my house, I'm the owner of the house, and I live my son and I, and I don't know what is the reaction of those people is going to do because they live close next to me. So please, do something because I heard many, you know, the other families, young families, they have children there. They say, "I can move," because they can move easily because they went. But it's not a reason to move easily or to move from the neighbor because we feel unsafe. Please do something, and that's the only thing that I want to say. Take care about this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Kelly. I live at 35 Faraday Lane. I just wanted to reinforce what was said here. We understand that the city and the police can only do work within the laws that are afforded them. But having met with the city before, what concerns me, my five-year-old granddaughter is in temporary, my temporary custody until her mom can get here from Chicago, for example. And we're not exaggerating when we say that we can't even walk up and down our own street, that the children can't safely ride their bikes or skateboards up and down the street. The house and the dogs have been a repeated problem. And what concerns me is, we've already had one attack to a person and two attacks to dogs, that we don't want it to get to the point where a child is molested, or, excuse me, mauled or killed before real action is taken. I don't know that if it's true, and I understand you guys can only work within what you can do, but it was reported that the boy who, he's not a boy, but he seems mentally to be a boy, that is in custody of these different pit bulls all the time. It was reported that he is mentally disabled. So maybe you could look into that and prohibit him from keeping dogs at the residence. My biggest concern is that the attacks, because they're moving different pit bulls in and out of these houses, are going to escalate to the point where someone gets really hurt or killed before something gets done. So I would just really request prohibitive and proactive action because it's just frightening, and it's frightening for the children, and I appreciate your service and your actions for the city.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
I've got a different topic. So I'm just using the time where I can, talk to you, so...
This is on a different issue?
Different issue.
Please go ahead.
Okay. I'm on the Faraday Lane on the main canal on the end of the canal. I moved in like 11 years ago. A year later, I made the complaint to the water management and drainage about the canal problem. And next to me is the overflow from Palm Coast to, from Palm, Publix area, and the water is always flowing, you know, not controlled in the dirt, so the dirt is washing into the canal. So I had boat for one, one and a half years. I have to salt because I can't get anymore. I dredge a couple of times, but it was no use. So I moved to the jet ski. I used the jet ski for a little bit, and 15,000 jet ski sucks the dirt and damaged my hygiene. It's in a garage, it's no use. I spoke with, if I'm pronounced wrong, sorry, because my language is not so perfect, Mr. Malden, and another guys, Dennis, whatever, you know, I make the pictures with the canal, I make whatever I can. Ten years. How much longer, and where I have to go? We're paying the taxes. Why we paying the taxes more on the canal? Because we have to use that water, yeah? So what's the sense for me to pay those taxes when I can use that? And another thing what I'm doing, I'm just, you know, like we're watching before, take the garbage out, that's my job on the end of the canal. I can give you more than the people who was taking out what I have to take from the canal, from the wind and from everything. You can find everything, and I have to take it out and throw to the garbage. That's my job on the end of the canal. And I don't know how this thing work, but for 10 years, if nobody can dredge the canal, nobody can do nothing, maybe we can fill it up? We got the people coming, just showing up, make the meeting, and a couple of years, quiet. When I make the pictures, they just come, talk to you, make you look stupid, and that's it. So I don't know what I have to do, where we have to go. So maybe, Mr. Mayor, maybe you can do something, you know? Maybe you can help us. Maybe we can start use that water. Fishing, you know? My son wants to fish. How you going to fish? You can't fish there. You can't even catch the fish there. It's so low. You can walk through the canal. Nobody come to visit me with the boat. So I don't know, is it impossible to do this, or just, you know, like, doesn't mean anything? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Mr. May, my name is Christopher Howie. Reverting back to the 4B Faraday situation, we have all heard of the broken window syndrome, where our neighborhood deteriorates with the start of a broken window. If you fix that window, you repair that neighborhood, you start to repair it. I think 4B sounds like a broken window. And this council ought to put its collective thoughts and heads to coming up with a remedy. I know the law limits you on what you can do with property. I know the law in Florida is against holding landlord responsible for the actions of their dogs. These things can be remedied. We can take action if you were to put your collective heads together and come up with a viable solution, whether a strong letter to the landlord holding the lease on this property, saying that you will suffer consequences if you permit this condition to prevail. Something can be done. It sounds kind of silly that we can talk about Palm Coast as a wonderful community, which it is, and let this blight exist in the face of the collective intelligence that they see before me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. But first, Mr. Landon, the answer to Mr. Carroll's question about a proposed land sale, land swap, land transfer, can you give us whatever you can give us?
Well, yes. The area we're talking about is adjacent to Bulldog Drive and areas to the east of that on State Road 100. This is in the State Road 100 community redevelopment area. It's actually, the intent was for the city to buy up those dilapidated properties and then have the area redeveloped along State Road 100 so that it's, instead of being a blighted area, it's actually an area we could be proud of. We do have someone who's come forth with the idea that they would like to take a look at possibly how they could redevelop and turn it back into private ownership. So this, you know, we are entertaining that, which is very consistent with the concept of that being a redevelopment area. It's very, very preliminary. One of the potential end users that they have talked about was Putnam Bank, and we've actually talked about that in the neighborhood meeting up at Matanzas Woods as being a viable location for a branch of Putnam Bank. So that's already public information. But the rest of it's very, very preliminary. If it gets to a stage where this potential redevelopment project is viable, there's a process that is required by state law to open it up and do some public notices and then come back to city council after that happens. But we're very much in the preliminary stages. So that's about all I can report at this time.
I think it's safe to say, though, that we are not entering into an arrangement with any third party to profit that third party. If there is any kind of a land deal, it has to be dollar-for-dollar, value-for-value.
Right. That's one of the reasons why us doing a land swap doesn't work. I mean, commercial property on the corner of Bulldog Drive and State Road 100 has a different value than in the neighborhood of Matanzas Woods. But it's more than just that corner, it's really that whole area. And so, yeah, there's a lot of work to do, and the value in this case is not just the value of the property upfront, but if it goes back into private ownership, what kind of value do we get with the tax base and sales tax and some of the other things that go along with it? So it's, you can take that in consideration, too, as part of a redevelopment area.
Thank you. I'm going to skip over the dog issue for just a moment. Mr. Malden, do you have any comments on the Faraday Lane canal? If not, could you give us, give council an update or briefing on what the circumstance? I'm not clear on the issue of the overflow from the retention pond by Publix going into Faraday. Maybe you could comment on that?
The area in question is the south end of Clubhouse Waterway, and it has a private pond that is a permitted stormwater pond that overflows into the canal. Also, through that parcel is a ditch from Shangri-La Apartments. What we've been trying to do, and it's been, we just don't have the resources to handle all the work that needs to be done, is get all the parties together, get some kind of authorization to be able to work on private land, and then we can clear up the situation. And it's a matter of where we put it on the priority list right now, and it will be moved up, I can assure you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Meek?
John, is there any benefit to doing a minor bathymetric survey of the area to determine the depths of water in the area at different tides?
We could do that, certainly.
We have the capability.
We have the capability.
I think that would help, Mr. Mayor, to determine exactly how much of a problem's really there.
I know we have a bathymetric survey of the entire canal system that's four or five years old, but maybe we could just take a look at this specific area.
Yeah, I think at times, we've looked at areas where we've needed minor amounts of spot dredging or something like that, and said, "Oh, yeah, wow, there is a little bit of a problem." And it might be that it's a turbid discharge over the years from stormwater ponds that were designed for an old wall and things like that. Okay, thank you, John.
Now, we've heard quite a bit of testimony today about an issue with dogs, pit bulls, and unsavory activities, allegedly unsavory activities. Let me say on behalf of the entire council that we certainly understand the neighborhood's None of us would want to be in that circumstance to have our child or our pet terrorized. That being said, unfortunately, we have to operate within the constraints of the law. Mr. Landon, could you give us an update, give us a briefing? Or, Mr. Abrow, as Director of Community Development, perhaps just give us a precis of what has happened, what the city's been able to do, and, quite frankly, what we cannot do?
Nestor was prepared for this, so he's going to make, give you an update.
Mayor and council, with a particular dog that bit the little boy's dog, that dog has been surrendered. We received a communication from the Humane Society last week, asking if the city had any objection to the dog being euthanized. We have no objection, and it had been scheduled for euthanization, to be euthanized last Thursday.
Okay. So that particular pit bull is, has been or will be euthanized?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That would be state law, I think, though, isn't it? Under the heading of dangerous dogs.
It's actually, it was actually volunteered surrender. If you follow state law, that dog would be classified dangerous, but it would not be put down. There's a process that's laid out by state law and, in fact, our own code that requires that it be maintained under certain conditions and secured, but it's not an automatic. This is only because the animal was surrendered by the owner for the society to do as they wish.
Mr. Reishwan, I'm going to ask you to offer guidance to council, perhaps in our workshop. I understand that we have very limited opportunities to take action in this case. I will tell you that after the meeting that I had with the residents, I spoke at great length with then-Chief Deputy Rick Look and Captain Carmen, more recently with Acting Chief Deputy David O'Brien and Captain Carmen about the Sheriff's Department involvement on this property. They assure me that, A, the property is under observation, B, they have no evidence of illegal activity, and unfortunately, well, fortunately, I guess, this being America, you simply can't go in and toss the house and look for evidence. There would have to be a search warrant issued on probable cause. I can tell you that the Sheriff's Department is aware of this problem. I've explained to them how concerned we are as a city council, how concerned we are as a city. Mr. Reishwan, I'm going to ask that you give council some guidance, some leadership in our next workshop session to see if there's something else that we can do.
Mr. Mayor, I can give some comments today if that would be okay with you.
Sure, sure.
And if there's necessary follow-up at the, excuse me, the workshop next week or the week after next, and you're happy to supplement this. I think it's important for all of us to understand and distinguish the different, the different problems. And the first one, because they are, they can, they're handled differently from a legal standpoint. And the first is the animals. As Mr. Abrow mentioned, we have code and also chapter 767 in the Florida statutes deals with what is a dangerous dog and what are the consequences of maintaining, owning, or failure to properly maintain a dangerous animal. Several observations about that. First of all, this particular dangerous dog, from what I hear this morning, has been put down. So if that is the case, then if there was another animal on this property that would meet the definition of dangerous dog, then there's a process for notifying Animal Control and authorities for going through the due process to handle that animal. Several observations, however. First of all, if an animal is deemed, if a dog has been determined to be a dangerous dog, and then there is a subsequent attack, either a human being or another domesticated animal, and that can be a crime. It can be either misdemeanor or it can be a felony if there's a severe attack by a dangerous dog, a previously determined dog that's dangerous under state statute on a human being, that's a third degree felony. So there are certain, certain criminal aspects, if you will, regarding the improper ownership and maintenance of an animal, specifically a dog that's dangerous. As to the owner, because from what I understand, from what I've heard this morning, the folks that are, that are in the property, that own the animals, one animal, the problematic animal, is gone. So that, so that is resolved, or at least the one that did the actual biting has been put down. But the owner of the property is not the owner of the dogs. Nevertheless, if there were indeed a situation that, and I'm not hearing the facts, would justify this, but if there was ever, if it ever got to the point where a dangerous dog maintained at that property severely injured another human being or killed a human being, then that would be a third degree felony, as I mentioned before. There could be the implication then of the forfeiture law, chapter 833 of the Florida statutes, which could allow the Flagler County and the Sheriff's Department to initiate forfeiture of the home. Because if a homeowner, a property owner, is aware that their property is being used to facilitate, facilitate the commission of a felony, then you can initiate forfeiture proceedings. So I certainly don't know that that's, if any assistance at this point in time, but it certainly is something that's out there, and you would think that the owner of the property would be aware of that. Now, also as to the owner of the property, there are certainly civil liabilities, not necessarily involving the Sheriff's Department or this city through its Code Enforcement Department, that exist already. There is strict liability under chapter 767 for any attacks by a dog against another human being, and there is, without, even if there is no warning to the animal owner, there is liability for the damages caused by that, by that animal. So there are private causes of action, private rights between the victims in this situation and the, and the owner of the animal. There may indeed be causes of action by the community, by the neighborhood, and specifically by the neighbors that have been directly affected against the owner for nuisance. A private cause of action for a private nuisance, that certainly is another avenue of relief. Now, that's the dogs. That's the dogs. I think it's important for us to distinguish that there, that there's those remedies, civil and criminal remedies with regard to the animals, but then I heard mention of other criminal, potentially criminal activities out there. And I do use that word specifically, criminal activities. If indeed those behaviors are ongoing in that community, then of course, the Sheriff's Department would have the power under the state statutes to initiate enforcement of the criminal laws. The city of Palm Coast, city of Palm Coast has a responsibility to enforce its codes, which are not criminal. They're civil. And to the extent that this property may be disrepair, the structure or the yard may be disrepair, then certainly Code Enforcement has the ability to go out there and cite the owner of the property. To the extent that there are any other violations of our code, then the owner as well as the violator, which most likely in this situation would be the tenant, would be subject to citation or Code Enforcement activity. But what I'm hearing today, Mayor, council members, is the main problem. If these allegations are true, would be more in the nature of, one, dangerous dogs, which I've just tried to discuss in detail, but also appears that there may be some criminal, it is alleged that there are some criminal activities out there. And that is something that certainly, I'm sure that, that city employees will work diligently with the Sheriff's Department to enforce the laws that are on the books to deal with that. From a Code Enforcement standpoint, we cannot enforce criminal laws through Code Enforcement. That is under the exclusive jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Department.
Let me interrupt you for one moment. What I have heard are allegations that one, that more than one dog have been harbored, sheltered at this home, and that one or more dogs has been involved in biting humans, biting other dogs. From what I heard, you say that the property owner allowing the property to be used to harbor such dangerous animals is, could, might be subject to forfeiture. Would it be inappropriate for the city to put the property on notice that this may be a consequence?
If such notice was sent, it would be my recommendation that the notice be sent either at our insistence or request from the Sheriff's Office, because it would be the Sheriff's Office that would initiate the forfeiture. We do not have jurisdiction, the city does not have jurisdiction to seek forfeiture of real property under the forfeiture laws. And I do want to emphasize, forfeiture is only available if property is used to facilitate, normally, is property normally used to facilitate the commission of a felony, not a misdemeanor. And the only way that the, this could be a felony would be if a dog has been previously determined to be dangerous under the state statutes and thereafter attacked and severely injured or killed a human being. So again, I do not want to imply that there's, there are any facts about the current use of this property that currently would allow an allegation of a felony against the owner of an animal. I have not heard that today. Now, there may be a situation where there are other dogs that are being kept on this, on this property. And Mayor, you are correct. A dog is not deemed dangerous just because another dog at the same location had been. That, there is nothing under the current Florida law that would allow the presumption that an animal is dangerous. There has to be some exhibited behavior before law enforcement and local authorities can take action.
Well, I'm going to ask that Code Enforcement do several things. First of all, my assumption, and it's only assumption, is that there is no dog at the premises now. I think we can ask the Sheriff's Department, ask our Code Enforcement, ask all of our city employees to keep an eye out. If there is a dog on that property in the future, then I want to be very certain that that dog is licensed and has had the appropriate vaccinations and so on and so forth. Beyond that, I'm going to ask that Code Enforcement be vigilant. I'm going to have another conversation with the Chief Deputy and the Captain and ask them to share in that vigilance, and we will do everything we can possibly do to bring this solution to this problem. Mr. Meeker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill, I think you were making reference into the 767 13 area attack or bite by dangerous dog penalties, confiscation, and destruction. As I understand what you're saying, there are definitions of what is a dangerous dog, but in this case, it's not declared to be a dangerous dog until it commits the crime, until it attacks or bites a person.
Correct.
At that point in time, it can be declared a dangerous dog. Now, do we have a mechanism, or are we the ones to have the mechanism to have that declaration made?
We have a hearing officer. We work with the hearing officer. If a complaint is brought, then Animal Control works through, with staff, to bring the allegation. There's notice, there's due process afforded the owner of the alleged dangerous dog. And then, then the hearing officer makes that determination under our code.
And at that point in time, the dog is declared dangerous. If it commits a subsequent act, that's when the remainder of this, of perenns run kicks in. Ten days' notice, collected by Animal Control, there could be another hearing, a written notification, and thereafter destroyed in an expeditious and humane manner.
As well as potential criminal charges being brought against the owner.
Yeah, this mentioned a first degree misdemeanor.
First degree, second degree misdemeanor, that is correct.
Okay.
Well, I think it's also incumbent upon us and the Sheriff's Department to notify the residents that this is a possible outcome, depending on their future behavior. I would hate to have, I would hate to put somebody into a felony position, them not knowing what constitutes commission of a felony. So I think we're, I'm going to have some more conversation with the Sheriff's Department. Mr. DeLorenzo.
Mr. Landon, do you know if 4 Faraday is registered with the city's rental program? I do not know, but I can find out for you.
Thank you.
I have two questions. If hypothetically speaking, the handler of the dog that's just been put down has another dog, and the other dog, the second dog exhibits dangerous behavior, can the city sanction this owner from the, from owning any more dogs? Is there, is there some point in time where we can go back and say, hey, you've had two dogs here, they've both been dangerous, they both had to be put down or otherwise confiscated, and we're going to prohibit you from owning any more animals? And my second question, which I don't expect an answer right now, does the city council have any precedent established for having dealt with this type of problem in the past?
No. I can answer your first question, and that is unfortunately, no. It's apples and oranges. We, there's nothing in our code or that I'm aware of in state law that would allow us to go to court and get a court order to prevent a resident in the city of Palm Coast from owning an animal, simply because of prior behavior. And I don't, I am not prepared to answer the second question, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meeker?
There's a difference between looking at a dog breed and saying, wow, that's a dangerous dog, as opposed to one that has gone through a process and has been declared a dangerous dog. Does that understand?
Well, that is correct, and there has been some discussion, and in fact, there have been, this issue has been, has been litigated and has been brought up before and discussed in the legislature, and that is, is it fair? And has it, is there any law that would say that a breed is dangerous? And specifically, the legislature has made a determination that, that there is not going to be this blanket determination that a breed is dangerous. There's no presumption that a member, an animal that is a member of a certain breed is going to be presumed, already has a strike against it. However, there is clear definitions in chapter 767, and also codified in our code statutes, about behavior of any animal, any dog, regardless of breed, and if it meets those, those factors from behavior, obviously the main one being biting, then that, that animal, that dog would be, can be, after due process, determined to be dangerous, and then there are consequences and penalties associated with that determination.
One more question. Would that negate the Miami ban on pit bulls, which you asked quoted, the fact that you cannot litigate against a breed?
Well, I'm not specifically aware of the ban that you're speaking of, council member, but I would, I would believe, my initial reaction is that if a local government sought to ban a particular breed, it could be preempted by the state, by the state of Florida. I can look into that to see if indeed a local government has done, taken that action, and whether they have been challenged in going after a particular breed. I am not aware, I will say, I'm not aware of any local government that has successfully simply outlawed or banned a particular breed of dogs. I believe it would likely be preempted to the state of Florida.
More questions, Mayor? Mr. Meeker?
Bill, under the definition of an owner, one of the concerns that we keep hearing today is the residents in the area are fearful of walking the streets, of riding their bikes, of having their children outside skateboarding, because they don't believe that the people at this other address are capable of taking care of the animals that are in their possession. And there is also the concern expressed to me through other communications that they believe the dogs are actually being moved through this house and possibly being taken out for other illegal activities some other place, but I don't have any factual basis for that one or the other. And it's going to come up under the comments for council later, but this is not the first concern that I've been getting recently of neighbors that are concerned for their own safety in their neighborhood due to renters in an area congregating in a house owned by somebody out of state. And so I guess my first question is, under the definition of perenns seven in the, in 767.11, perenns seven, where it says that owner means any person from corporation or organization possessing, harboring, keeping, or having control or custody of an animal, can that include an absentee owner?
If you could establish factually that there was a tie or connection between the owner of the property and the residents in the home that were exhibiting this type of property use, then you may be able to establish that and have 767 apply to the owner of the property. I don't, I'm not aware of any presumption.
If the owner was put on notice by some kind of illegal certification that the property is being used to harbor animas that at least in one case has committed an act where the animal was deemed a dangerous animal, is there any benefit to putting an absentee owner on notice of that? And if so, how would we accomplish that?
That was my question previously.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything in our code which would.
Can we operate under 767?
Well, we would want to work with the proper authorities that would enforce that, which, which would be primarily Animal Control and the Sheriff's Office. So I'm more than happy, if you so direct, to work with staff and to work with the Sheriff's Office, to, and the attorney for the Sheriff's Office, to see if there's any precedent for that kind of notice. We have not, in my role as city attorney for several decades, I've not ever been asked to do this, or am I aware of any local government's role in getting involved with this kind of notice to a property owner. But I'm more than happy to look into.
My point on this, Mr. Mayor, is that there are other instances that we keep hearing about that are similar, but don't necessarily deal with a dangerous animal. It's other activity that the residents believe that there's hijinks, illegal activities, whatever you want to call it going on, and whether it is appropriate for the city to provide notification to an out-of-state owner of such act, or the belief that such activities are existing on their property, and that, and their. are existing on their property, and that, and therefore allow the owner to police the renters themselves.
I would suspect we would have to be very cautious of libel and slander laws.
Well, interference with an advantageous business relationship as well, there's contractual relationship between the homeowner and the tenant. You know, the analysis, the business and legal analysis that I would want to be making is if, whether, first of all, whether there's sufficient evidence to make such a statement, to send such a letter, and what would be, would there be any real legal benefit of sending a letter in the first place? Because if there really isn't any benefit, then I don't know why you'd want to send that letter. Quite candidly, I think that the better way to do it is to, is to very strictly, you know, my thought is, is very strictly monitor the situation, and as soon as there's another dog out there, you're going to want to keep an eye on it very closely. And the only thing that I was thinking of, and I haven't heard any evidence of this, but if there's a resident out there that may be under the supervision of some state agency because of mental or physical incapacity, then there may be a certain state agency that may be able to get involved to determine if that individual is violating any sort of guidelines for that individual's residency in that particular home.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lewis. Bill, it appears that this is a serious situation here, not only on Faraday, but I think we've heard stories from around the city about certain types of animals that are either vicious or threatening. And I don't know how tight and how enforceable our code enforcement ordinances or rules are, but I think that this is a great opportunity for us to take a good, hard look at our enforcement possibilities and see if we can tighten up our rules in terms of dangerous dogs. We don't want to pick on any particular breed of dog, but I think that evidently our code enforcement is never that asked right now as to what they can do. And perhaps we can look at further ways of strengthening our code.
Okay, I think in summary, I think you've heard that this council shares some serious concerns about these issues. Mr. Lynn, and I would like you to meet with Mr. Abreu, with our representatives from the Sheriff's Department, convey to them our sincere desire to see this problem resolved.
Yes.
I don't know if we need to beat this, I was going to say dead horse, but it's a dead dog. Better just leave that one all alone. Okay, Mayor? I'm sorry.
If you allow me, for the neighbors, please contact us, they see another animal. We're within our rights to go do a wellness check. That allows us the opportunity to check for licensing, check for rabies vaccinations ahead of time, and we're perfectly within our means to do that.
Okay, so residents of Faraday Lane, if you see another dog there, let us know immediately.
Then contact him.
Sure. Contact anybody at the city, we'll get it to the right person. Okay. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Maguire.
Nothing to offer at this time, Your Honor.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. DiLorenzo. I'm going to say Mrs. DiStefano is our. I almost did.
Yes, thank you. This will be our last business meeting before Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving to you and your family. Also, immediately following Thanksgiving comes Black Friday, but I wanted to focus on a smaller-known day, which is Small Business Saturday, which is November the 26th. So I encourage you to all do as much of your shopping locally, help out our local small businesses. Thank you very much.
Mr. Meeker.
Jim, could you give me an update on where we might be on Kingsway, Oakings, could we name it on?
The renaming.
Yes. Just got an update yesterday, we're notifying businesses. One of the businesses has indicated that they will object to it. The other business has gone up to corporate and we haven't heard back yet. So as you instructed us to do before we move forward, actually contact the, I think there's two, maybe three businesses with the address, make sure they are aware of it, and get their opinion, and then bring that back to you.
Jim, can you help me out with our policy on sidewalk priority? I've gotten a lot of emails and concerns, discussions with folks about, you know, when a sidewalk down my area, I let them know that, heck, I'm on council, I don't have a sidewalk even on my street, so. But I thought that we had a, kind of like a policy, where we were focusing more on sidewalks within a certain mile radius of schools to make it safer for children throughout school in the early mornings or home.
Yes, instead of calling it policy, what we have is a five-year master plan. And when that five-year master plan was originally put together about three years ago, I think, first priority was to connect dead ends. It was amazing how many sidewalks that we had, just little, small gaps, that, you know, another block and it would be a continuous sidewalk. Secondly, just as you indicated, amount of the density, in other words, areas with more population, but also connecting neighborhoods to schools, parks, shopping, those type of things that would create a safe access from our neighborhoods to those points of interest. The, as far as the policy is concerned, what we are attempting to do, what our master plan calls for, is basically to have a path or sidewalk on all collector and arterial streets that do not have driveway, residential driveway connections to them. And, you know, that's what our progress has been towards. We have made a great deal of progress and still have projects on the drawing board right now that should get started, should have been started already, they're a little behind. And we have recently started working on updating that as we have the paths that are completed, and then what's the next project moving forward? Funding is obviously becoming a huge issue. The first five years, because of the state grants, federal dollars actually, but through the state, that we've received, we're ahead of schedule, we're a couple of years ahead of schedule, but the next five years would be quite a few, the dollars aren't there, therefore it will slow down.
I think the last time I looked at it in detail was about two years ago. So we're in the process of doing an update to the five-year plan now?
I think it's actually finished, and we can bring it to you any time if you'd like to see it.
And lastly, Mr. Mayor and council, the previous discussion we just had about the dogs, it's, I was on the phone for 45 minutes last night with another resident in an area with similar issues about safety concerns, where the neighborhood is afraid to go outside, afraid to walk in the area, they're concerned about congregation of a number of undesirable people at a specific location, and it's a challenge for city council to come up with something that stays with the freedom characteristics that are so integral in our society in the United States of America, and then on the other hand, protecting peace-loving people that just want to live next door and be able to enjoy their homes. I'm not sure exactly where the balance is, but I would sure like some discussions at some point in times, if there are options out there that we can utilize to assist the Sheriff's Department and determine whether there really is or really isn't a problem, and then take some kind of action to return normalcy to the people's lives who are living in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Under my comments, I have an application form for the Northeast Florida Regional Leadership Academy. Northeast Florida Regional Council is a quasi-governmental agency that is created and sustained by inter-local governments of the seven counties in northeast Florida. Each year, they do a regional leadership academy that is designed to help residents become active in regional activities. This academy is open to elected officials, it's open to residents, it's open to business owners, it's open to anyone. I have one copy, I'm going to leave it with Virginia. If anybody is interested in participation in the upcoming Northeast Florida Regional Leadership Academy, you can get a copy of the application from Virginia, and away you go. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, council, just one item. As all of you, everyone's very well aware, this council and any other local operates in sunshine, and that's pursuant to Florida statute, Chapter 286. One of the exceptions is where there is litigation, and the local government's attorney, in this case, your city attorney, requests an ability to speak with you in an attorney-client session, and this is authorized pursuant to Chapter 286, subsection 011. The purpose of this is to discuss settlement opportunities and to discuss expenses related to the litigation, and indeed, that is what I'm requesting. I do wish the opportunity to speak with all of you in an attorney-client session. We're going to schedule this for your next workshop, which is scheduled for November 29th, and it's for a time certain, to begin at 11:30, and to discuss the matter of Mayfield versus ATS in the city of Palm Coast, which has been pending for some time, and has to do with the red light camera issue. This will be a closed session temporarily during the penancy of the litigation, and I'm making this request as required by the process in the Florida statutes, so that there can be appropriate notice. This will be, there will be a court reporter that are taking the transcript of the meeting. So I just wanted to let the council know that.
And I think for the public, when the litigation is resolved, the minutes of that meeting are made public.
That is correct, sir.
It doesn't stay in camera forever?
No, that is correct.
Okay.
Exactly, yes, that's it.
Counsel, concurrence, we will schedule an attorney-client meeting following our workshop on the 29th.
Thank you very much, Mayor. That's it.
Discussion by city manager of items not on the agenda.
One scheduled matter, next Tuesday, because this is a five-Tuesday month, we do not have a meeting, and then the next workshop is the following Tuesday, the 29th. And then lastly, I'd like to say, congratulations to the mayor on reelection, and to the two new council members for your success in the election, and want to say welcome aboard, and look forward to the next few years.
Thank you.
That's all.
Mr. Lewis.
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you.